Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May 4th, 2017 Planning Commission meeting, City of Bellingham. I'd like to ask everybody to silence electronic devices. If you've got your laptop going or a phone, just make sure that it's on silent. And with that, Heather, would you please call the roll?
Ali Taishi.
Here.
Garrett O'Brien.
Here.
Steve Kirk.
Here.
Phyllis McKee.
Here.
Lisa Anderson.
Here.
Iris Madi Gibson.
Here.
My guest is excused.
Thanks, Heather. So our first item of business will be approval of previous meeting's minutes. We've got one set of meeting minutes. Heather sent those out for everyone to look at. They were for our last meeting. If anyone has any comment, they can make it, but if not, we'll just do head nods for approval of the minutes. All right, so minutes are approved. It was April 20th, meeting minutes. So the work session tonight that we're going to have, that's why we're sitting down here on the lower level, is because we're going to have a work session, so we're all just chatting. And that's going to be regarding the commercial zoning code update, but before we get into that, we'll have a public comment period for just general comment. So for the benefit of anyone in the audience, you have an opportunity at every meeting to come down at the beginning and speak for three minutes on any topic you want, not related to tonight's meeting topic, which is the commercial zoning code. So if you wanted to talk about anything else, you could come down, you get three minutes at the mic, and you can tell us what you think. I'm going to open that up. Does anybody want to make a public comment? All right. Seeing no one, we will close the public -- well, we have a mystery guest. Doesn't happen before. Okay, so we'll close the public comment period and move right into our work session, which, like I said, is on the commercial zoning code. Is that door opening now? All right. Well, exciting tonight. And I think we're going to start with a staff presentation. At least, do you want to introduce whoever's going to participate, or just yourself? And then we'll do the presentation, and then we can just have a discussion. And if anyone does want to comment on tonight's work session, we will allow comment at the end of our discussion, at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, and thank you so much for being here tonight. I am Elise Keim, a planner with the City of Bellingham, and I'll be giving the presentation today. I am joined by my coworkers Steve and Greg.
Thanks.
Can everybody hear me? Is that, that's good? Now? Good? Okay, excellent. So our work session topic this evening is the proposed revisions to our commercial zoning code. These proposed changes seek to simplify and clarify the code while maintaining our high-quality development standards in order to benefit the city's residents and encourage healthy and sustainable commercial development. So our purpose and scope, so y'all know what you're in for, is we're going to do a little bit of a recap on the city's efforts so far. We will update, provide an update on our research and focus group findings, and then we'll introduce the proposed changes as sort of a broad brush, and then we'll dive into some specific code provisions that are in your packets. So background on this, in January of 2016, the City of Bellingham partnered with the University of Washington's Master of Urban Planning Program, and students took a look at Bellingham's commercial zoning code, identified some major issues with it, and provided a tiered set of recommendations, starting from the easiest, lowest-hanging fruit to things like improving the website so people knew what link to click, and going all the way up to doing a huge revision of the zoning based more on hierarchical impacts rather than based on uses. So what the city's doing now is moving forward on two of these sort of middle-tier recommendations, creating development standards from commonalities in the current commercial zoning code, and establishing a citywide commercial design review process. And if anyone's interested in the previous work that was done by the UW team, they presented their findings to City Council June 6th, 2016, so that should be available online. So our guiding purpose in these revisions are to revise the commercial development standards and prepare a commercial design review process that encourages successful commercial districts and ensures those commercial uses are good neighbors. Just so we're all aware of what properties we're talking about, these are commercially-zoned properties outside of any designated urban villages. Our commercial zones have four use qualifiers, including planned, neighborhood, waterfront, and auto, and according to our comp plan land analysis, that's about 5.5% of the acreage of our city. So out of all these four use qualifiers, we end up with two code sections. BMC 2038, planned commercial, which is the majority of our commercially-zoned lands, designated for retail and personal services of a citywide or regional nature, and the idea is that those developments require both internal and external consistency and compatibility. Then we have everything else, the not planned commercial, BMC 2034, and it's a more general-use type intended to accommodate various levels of businesses and services, and it all depends on, those levels will fluctuate depending on location and site constraints. So those are our remaining use qualifiers: auto, waterfront, and neighborhood. And as you can see, that's in the minority of our zoned commercial lands. To some of staff's research findings, we took a look at BMC 2012, our general standards, BMC 2034, our commercial development, and BMC 2038, our planned commercial development. We also took a look at the neighborhood plans and the zoning tables. And from these five locations, what we found is that our code is saying a lot of similar stuff, slightly differently, with a little bit different organization. So there's a ton of redundancy in our code. And so what this revision is really about is bringing these commonalities together to make our code more unified and organized, easier to both understand and implement. As part of our focus group process, we focused on concepts and characteristics that are important for healthy commercial development. Some of those big takeaways were the desire for greater neighborhood commercial zones, the importance of connectivity and circulation for both pedestrians and vehicles, the importance of improving our parking standards to reflect greater flexibility, the importance of street-edge presence so that our commercial developments are welcoming to their customers, and a great deal of skepticism about the design review process. And feedback from these focus groups, when coupled with staff research, helped form the draft language that's in front of you tonight. So the proposed changes, staff is proposing a complete code replacement rather than a patch job, trying to fix these two different, slightly competing code sections. We're going to consolidate both the commercial and commercial planned chapters into one Why we're doing that is the planned section, it keeps referring to other code sections and is typically poorly organized, so trying to maintain both of those will, I think, work against us if we're trying to find a clear code that we can implement consistently. So we're going to consolidate, reorganize, simplify, and clarify our current development standards, and add a design review process. This way, we can move towards our stated goal of encouraging successful commercial districts while ensuring those commercial uses are good neighbors. If we're able to implement these changes, it sets the city up for some future revision We would be in a good position to get rid of additional superfluous languages and potentially revise our code even further. What we're doing tonight is laying that groundwork to implement these future changes. So the revisions of the code can be summarized in this quick comparison chart that you have in front of you and also on the screen. Check marks indicate language that was kept. The Xs represent language that was removed, and the diamonds represent new language, and we'll talk about the reasons why those were added or removed. Kept or combined language was maintained out of necessity. These are the, sort of the bare bones that you need to have a zoning code in the first place. Things like applicability, purpose and intent, permitted uses, and development standards, you really can't get away from, otherwise you don't have a zoning code. One of the major changes that you'll see in front of you tonight is a significant reorganization of both the permitted uses and development standard sections. They've been organized into a table format very similar to our urban villages. Language that was removed was removed for a number of reasons, including duplicative language. If it's found verbatim elsewhere in the code, it perhaps does not need to be in the commercial code section. This is language like parking, loading, landscaping, signs, fences, and your vision clearance triangle. We have a section of code for this already, 2012. Language is also removed if it was better addressed by other codes. So the commercial code isn't stating it again verbatim, but it is trying to address these code issues, but it's not the appropriate place to do so. Things like special conditions and prerequisite considerations have specific code sections designed to address these issues. Things like the shoreline, special condition, is dealt with in BMC Title 22, the shoreline master program, and that's the appropriate place to address those kinds of issues. Things like our right-of-way requirements or infrastructure requirements are better addressed in BMC Title 13, streets and sidewalks. So we don't need to try to shoehorn in that language into a code where it doesn't belong. Additionally, we found the codes would sometimes repeat themselves in ways that are unnecessary. General use regulations is specifically called out in our BMC 2030, our general commercial code, and it's repeating special requirements for permitted uses, which can better be addressed in the permitted uses section. And we do see a lot of procedural requirements in our commercial planned code, and we have, again, a section specifically dealt with the administration of development regulations. Now, this new language is here to ensure that commercial uses are good neighbors through a commercial design review process and to simplify the commercial code. As you see, we've taken out a lot of language, but it doesn't tell the whole story. So a section at the end of the code that says, okay, you found out that you can open your business in this location, that's great. What else do you need to know? This is the launch pad that tells you that you may need to look at critical areas for environmental review. You may be in a shoreline area. You may have some infrastructure improvement requirements. So it's a way to flag issues that could come up in your development, but not, but direct you to the appropriate place to look for further direction, rather than try to repeat it or summarize it in any way in the commercial code. So our next steps, just so you're aware, this is the first meeting, and what we're going to try to do tonight is incorporate Planning Commission feedback. We'll be starting on page 13 of your packets, which is where the code language starts. And once staff hears your feedback, we will be able to incorporate it potentially into another work session or hearing. So before we get started on the specific language, we've done the overview. I'm wondering if any of you have any general questions that I can address right now before we get into that specific language.
Any other questions? Garrett?
Can you go back to, can you go back to your last slide? We're, one, right there. New language. So when, are you talking about, when you're talking about addressing potential infrastructure requirements or things that may impact a development, are you doing that just through design review? Is that what you were saying there?
No. What I'm saying is that the, the design review side deals with impacts on, on neighbors, but that's not the infrastructure side. That's the last section of the code that says other code requirements. You'll see it on your last page.
That's new language.
Exactly. And that's new language that basically directs the reader to the appropriate code section because it shouldn't be located in the commercial code.
Right. That's good. That's good. Okay. That makes sense. Thanks.
Anything else before we get started?
Iris?
I'm unfamiliar with if there's a common sort of best practice that the city uses for convening focus groups, and so I was just curious, when I read about the focus groups being made up of staff, business owners, and developers, and community members, sort of a little bit more about how many people were involved and how folks came to be involved in that process?
Sure. Absolutely. So these focus groups held this time were a reconvening of focus groups that the University of Washington students convened last year, and they had a broader scope, and they included elected officials, appointed administrative people. And so this time, since we were focusing on specific issues and taking sort of that deeper dive, we wanted to talk to those who have the most direct experience with the code, the people who are going to the website. And so we pulled from that same pool.
I had a quick question. And maybe this is more once we get into this, but we're, so we would be eliminating the planned designation for commercial? Is that would be the end result of this?
I think in a few steps it would be. Right now, the use qualifiers, as envisioned, would remain, but essentially, if we're able to bring these codes together successfully, those kinds of use qualifiers become, for commercial specifically, become superfluous, and we don't need them anymore. And so we'll be able to remove them because we've addressed all those concerns that planned development tries to deal with, things like infrastructure improvement requirements, things like design review, things like public comment. So they will be replaced.
So they would, we would have these tables that you proposed in the document as opposed to like zoning table? In the zoning table, there wouldn't be like a commercial use qualifier?
Right.
Gotcha. All just reference back. What, what permit process would we utilize to capture all of those things like you mentioned, like infrastructure requirements, environmental review? Like, right now, it occurs in the planned permit?
Right.
Would we substitute the design review effectively? Like?
For some parts of it, the design review. For other parts, it's a matter of during your building permit.
So it would go through like the building permit?
Right. Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Sure, we'll have more discussion, but let's, thank you.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So we're starting again at page 13 of your packets. The chapter is, it's attachment two. The chapter is titled "Chapter 2033, Commercial Development." And it's a made-up chapter that doesn't exist yet. I just gave it a number because that one wasn't taken. So you'll see at the beginning of every section, there's a staff comment that sort of provides a brief narrative of why we made the changes that we did. And then at the end, staff has a specific question for Planning Commission that provides an opportunity for us to discuss specific concerns that staff has, but then also open up the discussion for any concerns or recommendations that you might have.
Thank you.
So we're starting off with 2033-010, applicability. The applicability was narrowed to exclude our urban villages because they have their own designated plans, so we're trying to deal with all that commercial land that is outside of some other type of designation. And this was done in order to avoid any conflicts with our urban village codes. And so we specifically state in our applicability that it will apply to those areas not in urban villages. And the question for Planning Commission is, should the commercial code be narrowed further or expanded? What are your thoughts?
Will it include the downtown section and the waterfront, since both of those have their own, or would those be?
It will not include those sections.
Those, are those technically urban villages?
They are technically.
Okay. Yeah. So does this, the way you've put it together, it like picks up everything except urban villages? So if we changed it, we'd be leaving either someone out or duplicating somebody? I mean, this is, it seems like you've got it right. You're picking up everybody who's not covered now?
Correct. That is the goal.
Yeah. Does anybody have any issues with that, or suggestions for change that?
Okay, just to restate that, you're saying that, okay, the urban villages, I understand, and then there are a spattering of commercial areas out there, and this would capture those?
Correct.
Got it.
Yeah, no matter their use qualifier, they are subject to this.
Yeah. And it's worth noting that the format in here is identical to the format in all our urban villages.
Correct.
So this would, from like the tables, you know, and the way like the, right?
Correct.
So that's, it's, it's creating more consistency. When you're looking at these different sections, it'll be easier to understand them.
That is the goal. Yes. So our next section, 2033-020, the purpose and intent. Again, since the code is about combining what we have already and improving from there, we took the existing language from 2034 and 2038. So it does talk about the use qualifiers, but does explain that each section is subject to those, is subject to this, to this new chapter. Are there any questions about that?
Do you have any questions on this? Iris? Yeah?
I was curious about your last question and the Planning Commission questions about mentioning the comprehensive plan.
Right.
And I just wanted, when I first read this, it really seemed like that would be appropriate, and I'm curious how you, how you might weave the comp plan into this language.
Sure. Absolutely. A statement somewhere to the effect of the purpose and intent of our commercial zones is to support the comprehensive plan and further those goals and policies that we've designated as a community, something like that.
That's pretty typical, isn't it? In a purpose section?
It is. And the reason I ask questions about adding any new language is because, again, we're starting from combining what we have currently, so rather than just adding language willy-nilly without any, without any questioning of whether or not it should be in there, I, I added those questions at the end.
I think the purpose statement's an okay thing. Just, I just want to make sure, I asked this question before we started, but when you talk about planned, so you'll look at the zoning table, and wherever area in town you're in, it'll have the use qualifier spot, and it'll say planned or waterfront, but the idea is that all of them will be subject to these regs?
Correct.
Do you think we'd still have to get a planned permit in a planned designation? Maybe that, I haven't answered that right now, but that, that's a question I have, is like?
Absolutely. And hopefully, if we're able to get it right with the development standards that just require things that a typical planned development permit requires for all commercial areas, scaled as appropriate for the use, of course, then we would not need to do that sort of planned development permit.
I think that would be really nice, because the planned permits restate code.
Yes.
And, and the design component of a planned permit looks, looks like it's going to be captured in a design component here.
That is the goal.
It's like a $3,000 permit. It seems like we would need it if we do what you're suggesting, which is capture all those, all those components within the actual document. So, curious. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions before we move on? We had some language in there we wanted to test out with the Planning Commission. It's just above that last question about the mention of the comprehensive plan. Should we mention the need to approve commercial uses which are compatible with city goals, policies, standards? It's typical comprehensive plan language. And then also have that language that the city can modify proposals to mitigate direct impacts, if that language is necessary or not.
Why wouldn't you include it?
Well, I guess you wouldn't include it if it is found to be redundant, but if we're able to say that it's, it's important language that we need, we would, we would go ahead and add that, but we just want to check with Planning Commission before we start adding language.
I think all those, those sections would be appropriate.
Would be appropriate in this, here, specifically in the purpose and intent. Okay.
And I'll second that, because I think sometimes, you know, it's almost like doing a thesis statement. It's really good to give an idea at the beginning what the goal of something is so that when people are designing something, there's kind of an understanding of why the city has made certain decisions. So to exclude it, I think it just, it loses some of the, the flavor of what we're trying to direct and why. So I do agree with Steve that you do need to have like a purpose statement at the beginning, and I think some of the language there is, I mean, is well-crafted to take out a little bit of it and have the main flavor put back in.
Sure. I support that, too.
Are we ready to move on to the next section?
Yeah, and everyone, just feel free to, don't look to me to get direction, because this is kind of just chatting, so if, you know, if Elise is going to move on and you still have a comment, just?
Feel free.
Chime in. Yeah.
The next section, 2033-030, range of uses possible. So this table format that you see here over the next three or four pages was pulled from their art urban village codes, which have a very similar format. The uses listed in the table were simply pulled from existing language, and they haven't been condensed or modified in any way. But staff, in our discussions, believe that there is an opportunity to modify these uses rather than having four pages of, of uses that get very specific, to, to condense them into broader and more flexible categories, and let those other development regulations really handle the issues like scale and impacts to a given use. Because use, we typically use as a proxy for dealing with impacts rather than our development standards, which can very directly address those. So yes, you just see four pages of, that's what our code says now. And staff will need to go forward with a more fine-tooth comb to really deal with those issues that, if they're not addressed specifically in a given use qualifier section, to make sure, ways that we can condense them. But since I'm the newest person here and don't know the history of why all these uses are called out, that hasn't been done yet.
In your comment at the beginning, you talk about aggregating them into broader categories. I think that's a good idea, if you feel comfortable that you can capture everything. And then you've got the A5 that talks about that, where, pardon me, you know, it's not listed. That's for like unlisted uses, basically, where the director can kind of say, yeah, it fits.
Correct.
Or it doesn't.
Right.
So.
Can I get a little clarification on page two, where you have the top-of-the-grid permitted conditional and then not permitted, and then asterisk being not addressed specifically? Is that language that you're planning to have into the table, or is that just for our direction?
Right. We would have the permitted conditional and not permitted language. That asterisk is a tracking device for staff so that we know that we need to go back and just double-check that this is a use that either is specifically not allowed or specifically is allowed in a section. And that's just from my unfamiliarity with the different uses.
Good to know, because I was going to say, probably should not have that there.
Not.
Are there any significant changes in what's allowed where? I mean, we're not really changing the zoning here. We're just?
So far, nothing.
We're just reorganizing the table.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
We're not adding uses that weren't previously allowed, or vice versa.
Correct.
Gotcha. Is the intent to do any of that? Like to go through and go, oh, we should put this here, or we should take this away from here?
I think it's a good foundation to, to move forward with those kinds of options, but right now, we're just trying to get everything in the same location so we can make those kind of informed decisions. And this kind of format really helps with that. So potentially, but not at this time.
Thank you.
But there would be a mechanism that if something, if a commercial area where something is not permitted, looking at attachment one for like a non, I don't want to say conditional, but if something was not allowed to use, there is a mechanism where someone can make that request, correct?
Yeah.
So, I mean, if it's, if it's not in the table, if we're not addressing currently in the table, or in the zoning, that a particular function's allowed, say, in sunny land, but somebody bought property, and it was a similar business to something that is permitted, there is a mechanism where they can make that request. And there's two-pronged, where it could be, I think I was reading, where it could be approved by the director, or it could go forward through, you know, if it's five, 50 feet from a neighborhood, it goes through a whole process with a neighborhood announcement and stuff. So we wouldn't necessarily have to start looking at all the commercial areas and deciding at this point what could be added. I mean, that's not the goal of this currently, is it? Because that becomes a much bigger project for us, I would assume.
So all I wanted to chime in with is that on May 8th, the City Council's having a public hearing for a code change that allows the director to deal with unclassified uses. So that would address what you've raised, in terms of things that, you know, either aren't clearly identified, or maybe there's vagueness with what kind of use it is exactly, and where it goes.
And that's the one where it's kind of, I don't want to say take. And that's the one where it's kind of, I don't want to say taken out of the hands of city council, but that's the, so that not everything has to go before a city council so that the director can make a little bit more independent decision. If that does not pass, is there, do we revert back to the current system where it would go before like a, a hearing or a public process to make a decision for something that's not a conforming use?
If, if I, I think I understand your question. If things, if, if a use doesn't slot quite correctly or isn't specified and the director's flexibility in being able to make a judgment call also doesn't work, then the next mechanism is an appeal to the hearing examiner specific to that proposal. That's, that's the typical.
You could also propose like a code amendment, like some of those ones that went through last year. Was it last year or two years ago? The ones on Samish where there was like the, the physician's office that didn't fit and so they proposed a site-specific code amendment? You could do that too still, right?
Yeah, you can do that, that's the full-
That's the full-blown.
Horse and pony show with everything, right? The, the code change we want to make allows the director to make that decision, you know, in real time.
It should help to eliminate some of those situations, right?
Yeah.
Where like someone has to go through that whole 18-month legislative process or whatever it was.
Right.
12-month legislative process.
I, I guess kind of just making sure, paraphrase that, if that does go through, then we may not necessarily at this point have to look at every commercial area and, and decide or amend what can be allowed there because there will be a mechanism that if it's not currently addressed, there will be a process where someone could start a business in that area without necessarily having to go through, you know, the big process, right? I, I guess I'm just concerned with a comment about if we're going to start looking at these specific areas where something is not permitted, if we're going to be looking at tracts of land and deciding, you know, can we allow this to happen here? Because that, to me, becomes something different than what I thought we were doing here. Does that make sense?
I think, I think I understand your question. And essentially, if we go through the condensing process and we get these more general uses rather than specifically calling out things like florists and tailors and whatnot, that takes away some of that, that issue. And so that is one of the questions in front of planning commission tonight is, should these uses be condensed further so that we're not going through this process? If the language doesn't pass, that if your use doesn't fall very neatly in the box, then you have to go through a legislative process.
Condensing makes a lot of sense to me because a tailor versus, you know, a different type of service is a little bit interchangeable, like grocery versus a meat locker. But I just didn't know if we're looking at an area that doesn't allow a particular, you know, service at all. I didn't want to go back and try to figure out if we were going to let, you know, adult entertainment in a particular area because currently it's not allowed, you know, making those type of changes.
Correct. And we're not, we're not doing those right now, no.
There's an item on page 15, middle of the page. You have service stations for automobiles, complete minor, minor auto repairs are permitted. That's kind of like the horse and buggy, those do not exist any longer. You either have gasoline in a convenience store or you have an auto repair shop. So I, I think it's a useless.
Yeah, so if that's our current language, perhaps revising it some or condensing it in some way to get rid of uses that are not around anymore.
It's no longer there.
Right.
Yeah. And that's one of the, oh, sorry. You go ahead. No, you go first.
Well, I was just thinking, I mean, not only that, but maybe looking to what uses aren't, aren't listed on here that maybe should be, emerging uses. I see a lot of asterisks on here and, you know, I guess if I'm hearing you, on May 8th, there's going to be, you know, a proposal to have directors' interpretation on some of these unclassified uses. Are we going to be proposing to have that process inserted into this before it goes for a public hearing?
Good evening.
Greg?
My understanding of the code change, the director has the ability currently to, to say a use is similar to what's allowed in a, in a zone. What the code change is about is setting up criteria for him to make that determination.
So I'm just wondering if that should be in the proposed change. So if an applicant has a commercial property, comes in, he's looking, sees an asterisk next to his use qualifier and says, I want to know if I can do it or not. Is there right now a mechanism in place that he can write a letter and get a determination?
Well, the asterisks there are for internal staff use and just for you to understand that our code doesn't specifically say anything about this use. So for example, we'll just go on page 14, the fourth use, retail establishments selling house trailers, mobile homes and boats. What our code specifically says that in neighborhood commercial, that's not permitted and in no other use qualifier is it talked about, which likely means it's not permitted. But as the newest person, I didn't want to go ahead and say this is what's permitted and not without really doing a very deep dive and very detailed assessment.
So you're going to, a lot of this ambiguity is going to be gone. You're going to have Cs, Ps and Ns.
Correct.
Or a corresponding no. Okay. That makes more sense.
And it sounds like you'll reduce, you're planning to reduce all these anyway, which will solve some of these problems, I think that Lisa brought up and you're, and even what Steve brought up regarding, hey, this use doesn't really exist anymore. Well, we won't have that.
Correct.
We'll just have like a automotive services or something broader.
Right.
Yeah. And, and then what Rick just, Rick, sorry, what Greg just said about Rick's ability to make the call, that's already in the code on, on things that are unclear. So we don't need it in here because it's, it's already in there?
It's already in title 21, which is our procedures section as a decision that's available. And I think that the path is to make it something that is still available, but easier to make because the criteria are clear. Typically, we, you know, we're, we're doing quite a bit of research on something that isn't clearly, doesn't have a clear use slot. And sometimes it can, we suffer from sort of being all over the board. As much as we try to be consistent, we sometimes can stray. And so having that criteria will, will help us each time apply it the same way.
Makes sense. Iris, yeah?
I'm curious about the, what considerations dictated the coming up with the category? So like environmental or have to be a foot traffic at a business and what other considerations?
You got a mic?
The reason I'd ask is that I'd imagine like a, a tailor and a dry cleaner might have this similar foot traffic and be in a similar category, but one has, a dry cleaner has far more environmental issues than a, a tailor would have. And so how do those, how do you come up with those categories and what, what's considered?
I, since I had not made any of these categories, I can't speak to it.
I think there's two things. One is when you go through and start looking at some of these uses, you, it's easy to recognize that they come from our 1969 zoning code and they are uses that flourished in that time and they were, you know, specifically called out because there are probably more of them. And so we definitely want to consolidate. That'll be kind of our next step. We're, we're interested in lumping uses together that have similar impacts. You know, if, if dry cleaning's the example, yes, they have environmental impacts, but like so many other things, there are other codes and regulations now that handle those that we're really trying to focus more on what can we affect through the code that's not addressed elsewhere. We have so much of that that runs through our code where it's almost like it's our, you know, our defense plan. We're so concerned about everything that's happening by citing bits and pieces of code that exists elsewhere that if we just focus on what people care about, which are, you know, what we've heard is bulk, design, massing, landscaping, pedestrian connection, those things. The other things have regulations elsewhere that will address those things. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, thank you.
Thank you. Well, you had a couple of specific questions for us. One was should it be condensed more than it's shown here?
Right.
And the other one's should single-family houses be permitted? Maybe we, what does everybody think about the first one? I mean, it sounds like, yeah, it sounds like all of our concerns would be partially addressed by some condensation of it, so.
And also simplified, I'm looking at some of these things and I don't even know what some of them are.
Yeah.
Right.
Mining, like things like that still. Yeah. So, and then regarding the single family, so we haven't discussed that, but what's, what's that about kind of?
Sure. So what I heard a lot from our focus groups was the desire for greater neighborhood commercial zones, which gets into rezoning and is not the scope of what we're talking about tonight. But it sort of brings up the question that a lot of our neighborhood areas where we would potentially cite neighborhood commercial likely have residential single uses in them. So in my discussions with staff, we talked about, should we try to have any sort of competition between residential and commercial lands? If you, you live in a house and it's rezoned, a commercial, what does that do to you? Is that creating any sort of conflict? Or if we're already having issues with finding enough housing, should we allow housing in areas that are not zoned for residential uses?
Do we have thoughts on that?
Because right now, isn't residential allowed in a planned commercial designation currently?
Multi-family. Yeah, we're talking about a single family.
Yes, specifically single family.
Single family is allowed outright in a planned zone without having to do site plan review.
Planned res, both planned commercial and planned residential?
Yeah.
Usually, commercial property, I'm assuming, has a higher value than residential. I mean, I haven't developed commercial, but I would make the guess and maybe you guys can confirm that. Have you ever had in the last 10 years in a commercial area, someone come forward with a request to develop a single-family house?
That's a good question.
I'd have to really scratch my head and therefore that's the question, if that's the case. I think the answer is no. I can't recall one.
But I would assume if we went the other way where we allowed commercial into a single-family neighborhood, which would again mean updating, but we would be greenlighting that that's something the city supported, where perhaps a single-family lot would be cheaper than a commercial, we could start seeing cookie cutting going into our single-family neighborhoods with commercial pop-up without a lot of limitations. So, you know, you could have a 7-Eleven in the middle of, you know, a neighborhood in Birchwood because someone can buy something.
That's not, that's not what they're proposing here.
I thought you were talking about, you know, can we have single family? I mean, could we have commercial and single family?
No, the opposite.
Is that not the opposite?
If we reverse, because essentially, when we think about, what I heard from the focus groups is more neighborhood commercial, more neighborhood commercial, I want to be able to walk to my coffee shop, my bookstore, what have you. So if we, if we permit, if we think about what current development looks like on a arterial that has single-family zoning in it and it would be a potentially a prime location for neighborhood commercial-type development, are we creating a bunch of non-conforming uses if we say, well, now, single-family can't be permitted here? Is that something that we want to do? Or do we want to try to remove any conflicts? Sort of, it's a balancing of what, what is our goal here? And I don't know that we'll have the answer tonight, but it is something that staff really struggled with. And so we wanted to bring that to your attention.
So if we said no, would that limit areas that were being like greenfield? Where like right now, we're doing the, help me out, what's the one we're going through workshops right now? Last, sorry. So let's say we go into the UGA and we're planning an area and there's going to be a single family, but we want to be able to have small commercial sections within that. Would that tie into this at all, you know, as we expand commercial area?
Right, so that's a, a good question is about what exists presently and how we deal with what, what will exist in the future and future development versus redevelopment. So if we say something like, single-family houses are no longer an outright permitted use in neighborhood commercial zones, what that would mean in our current areas is that suddenly a bunch of single-family houses are now non-conforming. What that would mean in a greenfield-type development where nothing's on the land, that would mean that with those zones, that single-family can't go in there. So it just wouldn't happen in the future.
But they'd be commercial zones.
Correct.
Yeah, we're talking about only, we're talking about the idea of putting either preserving existing single-family housing stock in a commercially-zoned area or building new single-family housing stock in a commercially-zoned area. We're not talking about rezoning anything to commercial from residential or placing commercial development in an already residential-zoned area. This is just those two.
I guess the word, yeah, the word I was looking for was the subdivision ordinance that we're working on because we had seen a slide where, you know, it was an example of going in and developing a larger community. And I'm just wondering if there would be any benefit allowing this, knowing that more than likely it wouldn't happen in already established areas because of the value of the land would not be a wise area. But for a single family, but if we were going into a new subdivision area and someone wanted to designate a large area as commercial, but they plan on within that having pocket housing so that it's more Mayberry walkability, but they don't want to right now designate this little spot, this little spot, this little spot is commercial and this is residential. They want to kind of do a larger template and then divvy up the pie as development happens. Would this mechanism allow something like that? Or would there be a different trigger in the subdivision ordinance that would allow them to set a larger chunk aside and then, you know, carve out the pie later? Does that make sense where my brain's going with that?
Yes. And the answer is there, there are two separate processes. So what, those little neighborhood pockets would be established where they aren't already existing through neighborhood plan amendments or subdivisions or binding site plans or through UGA planning, like you mentioned. That's where you designate those little pocket neighborhood areas. We're just asking, can we, should we eliminate the ability for single-family in a commercial zone? For example, we don't allow single-family development in industrial areas. So if you think about the areas where uses between single-family and industrial blend in Sunnyland and James Street, where there's kind of this, you know, meshing of the two, single-family homes aren't allowed. And so when they go away, they're gone. And the idea is to preserve the industrial land for industrial uses or to accumulate industrial holdings for bigger industrial uses. The same's true for commercial. And so it's just a, even though this is all, this is all good, we just want to get a sense from you if we should do the same thing for commercials so that similar commercial zones are not eroded in a sense with less dense, less pain, single-family.
I have one more, so please forgive me, but I'm just trying to see if there's any benefit since this, we don't want to come back and revisit. So I have one more scenario. Let's say my section of the neighborhood in York, five years, 10 years from now, gets rezoned and it's commercial as the, hopefully, the great urban village expands. But I have a beautiful house and it burns and it's more than 50% damaged. And now my, I'm non-conforming because it's been changed to commercial, but I want to rebuild my home. Would I, I'm assuming I would not be able to because I have been rezoned and I'm non-conforming and it's past that point, it's fully destroyed. But I, again, I want to build my single-family home. Would this allow that option in the future for areas that have been rezoned but currently have single-family homes where somebody would want to rebuild?
That's probably where the impact would occur is if there was rezone, no longer permitted use. Then that's where you essentially feel that impact.
Would it be, you'd be conditional use permit?
Well, there's a 50% threshold, I think is what you're getting at. I have a solution for that. If you make them, if you make them not permitted in the table, but you put one of these little numbers next to them and then by that number at the bottom, you say, all those single-family homes permitted prior to the adoption of this ordinance are permitted uses, which means if your house burns down, it's not a non-conforming use, it's just a permitted use. And that prohibits new single-family construction. Does that make sense? So, because I personally think we should prohibit.
Yeah.
Because we have a limited supply, 5% of our land of commercial. And if we, it, it's- And if we, it, it's an inefficient use of the land. It's like a super inefficient use of the land to have one home on it. And the only risk is exactly, I was thinking of exactly the scenario you described, like, okay, then we make everybody non-conforming and we make their lives really difficult. If they want to do an addition, they have to get a CUP, you know? If they want to do anything, they have to get a conditional use or something. But if we, we can qualify that, you guys did it in the Fountain neighborhood for drive-throughs, same exact thing, and said, "Drive-throughs that were here at the date of the adoption of the ordinance are not non-conforming, they're permitted." Anything new is prohibited. So, just an idea, I'm, I'm a proponent of excluding them with, with a provision that protects existing homeowners from the onerous process.
I agree, and I, I thank you for entertaining. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't limiting something where it would be very beneficial, because I kept thinking of, um, some of the stuff we're currently working on. But I was also thinking that there are edges that someday may end up being absorbed into commercial, but I would really hate to have a situation that someone would be limited. I didn't even think about doing an addition and that, having a whole process to it. So, if it's possible, and if everybody else would accept that, I would love to see that as an addition.
So are we saying that if a house, um, if an owner of a home and decided to renovate or, or build or sell or whatever, that, that designation of residential would go with that? But what if the owner decided they wanted to make it commercial? If they're a residential within a commercial area, is that an easier thing to do? I mean, is that easy? Yeah.
Right, now it's an outright permitted.
But you couldn't go backwards.
No, no, I understand that, but once the owner has made that choice, I just, I just don't want the owner obligated to.
Correct.
Make sure that 50% of the sticks are in the air.
Protect, is that forcing someone who might have a nice old, like, York's a good example, like, a really nice old home that they want to maintain. They don't mind living by a commercial building. That should be their choice.
Yeah, that's the, that's the only impact that I could see, that, and having that qualifier in there satisfies that.
Might be the, the way to go.
I would second that.
That's great. Thank you. Yes.
Well, I was thinking of the same thing.
More, I'm not entirely, not at all convinced that we would remove, um, single-family homes from commercial zones. It seems like we have a lot larger vacancy rate in our commercial zone properties right now than we do in our residential zone properties. And if we want, in the future, down the road, to be able to have more infill, um, we're going to run out of spaces to do so. And if there's small pockets on the outskirts of commercial zones, those are excellent places to do so and have, um, interesting neighborhood interlocks like there are in the Sunnyland. And so I feel pretty strongly, and I think, I will need to think more on it, but I don't know why we would remove it, um, remove residential opportunities.
Is the, and can you make the distinction between multi-family? If you're talking, if talking about density and increased density, I think what they're talking about is just single-family homes.
Yeah.
That is specifically single-family for this issue.
But not multi-family or town.
I agree with everything you said about how important it is to be cognizant of the pressures, but the, this does permit multi-family, so I'd say, let's take it even further. Like, that's, I guess that's what I'm getting at with the inefficiency. Like, it would be a bummer if someone chose to put one home on a commercial property versus building, like, a 10-unit apartment. And a 10-unit apartment, like, that's really getting after our infill needs. So, I mean, I, I understand the concern, but that's why I'm less concerned about it, because this does permit, uh, it still permits apartments, right?
Everything that it permitted before, correct. Yeah, nothing's been changed.
Where's the map that you showed earlier of where they use a commercial zoning?
No, so, um, I, I pulled it from, uh, the, the city zoning map and just scrubbed away all the stuff that wasn't relevant.
Can you send that out? Because I don't think it does exist, like.
Right, just like that, and that's just something I did in GIS, so. We can make it prettier.
And it, it's probably worth mentioning that with the apartments, it, it, it needs to be a mixed use. Is that correct? Yeah, so it's not, it's not residential, to your point.
Purely residential.
It's not an outright permitted use without being mixed with a commercial component. So that would be, you know, something worth discussing, if it would be appropriate in certain designations to have multi-family as a standalone use.
That's been placed, that rezone, that I was talking about, right?
Right.
Changed it to allow residential without a commercial component.
Which was the planned designation, I thought.
Yeah.
Allowed for that.
Well, maybe it warrants further discussion down the road. I mean.
Sure.
Iris makes a good point about, you know, looking at, I guess, what downside is there, so.
I have a question, after tonight, do we come back and revisit this another time? Or is this our only time through here?
Uh, we will be revisiting based on your feedback here. I will take that and incorporate those edits, um, and come up with a, either through a work session or, or a, or a hearing.
Public hearing.
Right, it sort of depends on, uh, how much feedback we have.
Do we have any idea when that might be?
I need to consult with, um, my other staff members, because I know there's a lot in front of you right now, and we want to make sure that we, um, we can set up those meetings efficiently, so it's TBD at the moment, once I speak with my coworkers.
I think, I think for me, when you're talking about the components of housing and commercial, that map that you have, you know, just identifying what areas this could affect, because, you know, we're not talking about urban villages, which is a significant amount of our commercial lands. We're talking about these sort of outlier commercials, it's 5% of the land used designations. It's not a significant chunk of our city. But if we're trying to understand, you know, what housing impacts there might be, just might be nice to have a map just showing, "These are the areas."
Sure.
I think we could have a better discussion about that.
Well, maybe we can just leave that one as a discussion topic, and you guys can think about it more internally, and then we can always revisit it, and Planning Commission can talk about it more.
That sounds great. So our next section, uh, 2033040 is development standards. And again, as you see here, it's done in a table format, very similar to our urban villages. It's all the language that comes from 2034 and 2038, so these are all existing requirements. They are organized in a way that, um, staff believes is a bit more user-friendly and consistent with our other code sections. And one of the, um, big questions that, uh, staff had was about, um, oh, it looks like there's a typo in the question, Note 3B and C, uh, not Note 2. It should say, um, when we're talking about our minimum yard requirements. So that's when we're dealing with those more sensitive areas, where we have a commercial-abutting non-commercial uses, and how, uh, how we deal with that as, as a city. So if we take a look at, uh, Note 3D on page 19, uh, we say that, uh, minimum yards, they can be reduced if you have an eight-foot-high masonry wall, uh, and that is your only option. So the question is, does someone want to live next to an eight-foot-high masonry wall? Maybe, could we change that language? Would that be appropriate?
This, it depends what kind of masonry, you know?
Sure.
Yeah, bricks, pretty nice.
It might be a good thing.
So with the yard setbacks here in planned commercials, is no, no structure shall be located within 20 feet of a residential general-use type designation.
Correct.
So those are the areas that would be directly abutting, you know, like a residential area. And so, there's a 20-foot setback.
Right, and then in other sections.
None, no setbacks in the other.
Right, um, except, for example, in auto, under Note 3C, land within an auto commercial area is adjacent to land with an area having a residential. A minimum 25-foot yard shall be provided. So there's a little bit of inconsistency in the distance of our yards, and is it worth, um, standardizing that at all? Especially if we move away from use qualifiers. That might be a, a useful thing to do. It's also worth noting, we only have two areas, uh, zoned auto, commercial. So, not that much.
Which two areas?
Uh, they are off of, I can point to them on the map, I'm new to the cities.
There's one on the east side of I-5, near the, uh, across, tucked in between I-5 and the, um, Park and Ride, WTA Park and Ride, which I think is maybe on Maple, tucked in there. And then the other one's on the other side.
It's, yeah, it's right next to it.
Yeah, right next to it. So there's two, and they're both very small areas, they're like a block or two in either direction. I can't remember exactly where the second one is.
What was the first one you said?
The first one is tucked in between, uh, Lincoln and, on Maple, right off I-5.
So you have a 20, in the table, for planned, you have a 20-foot setback when it's adjacent to residential general-use type. Then you have none in the other ones, but there's a reference to, for neighboring commercial, to a 20-foot setback, and for auto to 25, and for some reason, waterfront doesn't have one. I would be in favor of just saying none for all of them, and cap, I mean, you, you basically could take, for, if you're talking about making these things easier to read, you could take the 20-foot specific reference in planned and just use the, the footnote.
That same language?
And you could, I don't know, I, I mean, I don't know the difference between 20 and 25 feet. You could just say, "In all neighborhood commer-, you know, footnote 3, in all commercial designations, adjacent, 20-foot setback adjacent to residential, uh, general-use type."
Right.
Unless people think there's a specific reason to go to 25. I'm just thinking, there's no reason to have a footnote for three of these types and then have it explicit in the planned. It would make sense to just use the footnote for all of them. But I guess that would be adding a 20-foot setback in the waterfront and reducing the auto one by five feet. So if other people aren't comfortable with that, you know?
Well, I guess my question is, again, without knowing the areas that this is relevant to, it's hard to get a good feel for what setbacks might be appropriate. But my question, you know, is, did you guys think of optional development standards at all for setbacks? To where a property owner might be able to reduce a setback, given certain mitigation impacts, or? I, I just, I always, without any sort of departure at all, in just saying, you know, 20 feet or 25 feet is the appropriate setback, that may not be the case, and that, that's kind of a big chunk of land, dealing with the size of lots that we're seeing now.
Correct, and so, um, that was one of our questions to, to Planning Commission. When we talk about minimum yards, they could potentially be reduced to as much as 10 feet, or as little as 10 feet.
What did it say that?
Uh, Note 3D, and it says, "The only way to get that reduction," and this is existing language again, so we haven't added anything, um, "is that you can get that reduction if you put a wall there." And that's it.
I think the intent is that you're maintaining a degree of, you know, privacy or separation, and then you're trying to just state the material and make it easy, you know, a masonry wall. I'm just wondering if we can have that reduction available for more of a purpose, or, you know, the owner, you know, shall demonstrate that through a variety of screening that, you know, impacts are. And that could be, you know, an interpretation, but just to say a masonry wall, to me, that doesn't seem, like, doesn't seem appropriate.
Very Italian.
Yeah, there might be better ways to do that, you know?
And, and options, not the only option.
Yeah, maybe some other options.
Like you mentioned landscaping.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, but also on the concern that, you know, you know, it really depends on the property, but we could be getting in a rabbit hole, saying, "If this, then that," and we're trying to streamline, because it depends on, you know, where's parking? What type of service? What kind of noise is being created? How close is that house? How high is the building? So I, I think this currently is trying to give, you know, a certain amount of distance, unless that solid masonry wall gives some sense of safety and soundproofing, and, you know, some ventilation aspect, because if someone's parked and their car muffler is going into your bedroom window, because it is able to penetrate through shrubbery, which you might have great landscaping, but that's not helping your carbon monoxide in the middle of the night. Those are concerns. So I think some of this is, was thought out, not knowing a specific piece of property. So I don't want to necessarily toss it out, but if there was a way, but then, you know, like, whose vision is that? Is it up to the property owner to agree that something is sufficient? Or is it somebody who doesn't live there? And if we get into something that we leave it a little bit more liquid, that would be a concern, is who makes that ultimate decision, that something is sufficient over this.
And we do talk about, when we get later to sections on design review, that those properties within, um, 50 feet of, uh, of non-commercial uses, they have that design review component. So that might be an appropriate way to address it, is that if you want to reduce your yard, obviously, then you're in, you're in the design review option anyhow. So you're going to have to go through this process, and you're going to have to let your neighbors know that you're building what have you.
Yeah, like, because that's, I think what happens is when you write things in specifically, it's more preventative than it is helpful, you know? So it's like, when, I, I'm a fan of design review. Design review identifies those areas that there's going to be impacts to neighboring property owners, and as long as it's clear that that's a component of the design review, is that you need to, you need to be a good neighbor, and let the applicant demonstrate how they're going to do that. That's a pretty rigorous process, but I always just hesitate to have a, a set, you know, setback with no opportunity for reduction. So I would like to see more of how it might be tied into the design review, so if it's, you know, within 50 feet of a use.
So maybe that's the follow-up question, just maybe a straw vote, on would people rather see a hard, fast number with, if that's, then this is? Or would handling it through design review be a better mechanism?
Well, I think we're visualizing flat lots, you know? I mean, I think that in our conversation, I've been listening to any cues that would suggest that we're, you know, we could be looking at a 45-degree slope between, and then setbacks become somewhat irrelevant, you know? If your roof line is level to the, you know, footings of the adjacent house. I would like to see some more flexibility here, because we're not usually building on flat spaces. You've got, you've got vegetation, uh, could be things to do with runoff. I mean, any number of things could, could impact this. I just hate to see us come up with binding language that makes no sense to the design.
So?
I'd like to see something specified, that a design review can go back and say, "If you're not meeting, um, you know, being a good neighbor, then this could be implemented." So there is something concrete, but maybe a footnote that states that, you know, lesser distance and different materials can be utilized for proper screening through a design review, providing the applicant can demonstrate, um, proper mitigation, you know, something in that, if it's not getting too much into the weeds, and then have them go to the design review and look at that specific piece of property. And if they could come up with something where they could maximize their lot and also properly mitigate any kind of negativity to their adjoining neighbor, you know, satisfactorily, it would be great to be able to, be able to implement that flexibility at that point. Is that, like, unheard of, of doing, or getting into bad writing? Okay.
No, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, what about the, you know, in the purpose and intent for design review? I mean, is there, is that talked about in here? And, you know, when you look at, you know, multi-family design review criteria, there's certain criteria. Commercial, I would assume, has same, you know, and compatible development with neighboring uses. I would think when you trigger those setbacks, that could be spelled out in the design review.
Right, that that might be the appropriate place. So if we did something, uh, where we said, "For minimum yard setbacks from property lines, for all uses, none subject to an appropriate design review, where you're able to mitigate impacts, and show," so that might take some wordsmithing, but at least what I'm, what I'm hearing from you is that's the direction we're thinking of going?
Yeah, Mike?
Do, what we could do is we could move into the next section, which deals with commercial design, and discuss that a little bit, too, and if we need to flip back and forth between this and yards, and.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Right, if we're able to find a solution that way.
May I make a quick request for our next conversation? I'll do some research as well into, um, what similar mid-sized cities have for setbacks for commercial zoning?
And maybe also what we're doing in our urban villages, which are commercial designations, too.
Can I ask a quick question to the commission, too? Is the concern predominantly for adjacent to residential? Can I ask a quick question to the commission too? Is the concern predominantly for adjacent to residential? I mean, because the code says none, and that's, that's like if you're adjacent to an industrial and other commercial use. And then what, what, when it gets into the, I mean, the current rules, and then it gets into adjacent residential. I just want to clarify from my own understanding, is that what everyone's kind of talking about here? Is just that scenario where you're adjacent to a residential development or is there a concern also from anybody about setbacks amongst commercial uses?
For me, it was with residential.
Yeah, I thought it was different purposes, different uses.
That's the nature of commercials.
Exactly.
That's what it is.
I just wanted to make sure. I kind of was reading that and I just, in case we needed to expand the discussion with these guys, is that how you guys were thinking about it too? Okay.
So our next section, 2033 oh five oh, commercial design. Design review, we discussed it a lot at our focus groups. And the, the scope here was to think about process and not about those specific requirements. You'll see I've added in some sort of dummy requirements that are based on current. And we can talk about that at potentially another time. Right now we're talking about process. So carving that out is, I think, important. So the section that would exist as staff envisions it within the commercial code is the applicability section, which essentially lets lets the user know, do I have to do design review? What's going on here? What is, what is this? And then we get to a section where we keep all of our other design review sections or where we're supposed to is BMC 2025. So I called it out separately and that's on page 22 of your packets. And that's where it actually talks about process. So we're trying to avoid putting process in our commercial code because process is better addressed in the sections it was designed for. So that's and what we have for our design review, it's very process intensive and it all lives in 2025. And if we want to move forward with that and be consistent, that's where this section would go.
Yeah, literally all this says is if, if you're here, this is what applies. If you're here, this is what applies, then all that what actually applies is in 2025.
Yes, correct. So should we flip to 2025? Because essentially it's just a little wayfinding that says go to 2025.
You, you talked briefly about
Sure.
oh six oh, I think on one of Garrett's questions, but do you want to just cover that real quick?
Yeah.
It seems like pretty boilerplate.
That might be. And so we can just spend more time on design review. So really quick, getting out of order, 2033 oh six oh, other code requirements. So focus group feedback essentially said that codes that are better addressed elsewhere, don't put it in the commercial code, it gets confusing. So what we're saying here in this section is again, it's some wayfinding for the user that says that depending on a district, district or site constraint, that commercial development might have some additional requirements that you need to think about. So if you're really honing in on a site that you want to develop, that's great, but think about things like street improvements. And then these are some of the, the most common issues that people are dealing with when they're doing commercial development. Things like requiring street and infrastructure improvements. So what we say in this section, it's pulled from title 13, it gives a little brief explanation of what it is, and then it says, go see title 13 for more information. And that's what it's doing with all of these sections. So we have street improvements, your parking requirements, loading, landscaping, signs, fences, environmental issues and shoreline issues. So we're essentially taking those special conditions and prerequisite considerations that were put in the code somewhat inconsistently and saying, okay, these may be relevant to you or they may not, depending on your site, this is where you need to go for more information.
I would just want to make sure that somebody would know to go look someplace else and just assume because it's silent here, that there, that it doesn't exist someplace. So a little crumb trail needs to take you, you know, instead of, you wouldn't want to read, yeah, read something and decide you're home free and find that you're, you've overlooked something just because you didn't have a path to it. Is that making any sense at all?
I think so. Can we try just one more time?
I mean, you don't want to be redundant and say the same thing over and over. On the other hand, you don't want somebody to read this and think it's, it's, it's self-contained and and nothing else outside that those parameters exist elsewhere. And that if, instead of saying you might want to think about, you need to go, you know, make sure you check these areas within the code that, that they might get caught up with if they overlook them. Correct. Yeah, I do, as opposed to, I mean, in other words, and even maybe like a little asterisk at the bottom, and these are other places you need to look. Because otherwise somebody looks at this and they think, I have it.
Well, it says compliance is not limited to those code sections listed here. But we have to do like an exhaustive list of everything?
Well, I don't know. Then see, that, that, what makes sense if.
It's a good question.
It is.
You don't want to miss anything, but it could be like overwhelming if the whole entire code was, I mean, there's a lot to look at, right?
Well, would it be overwhelming if they show up thinking they're good to go and they find out that they've overlooked a whole you know, litany of things?
This is where, that's a good point, because when you're trying to, you're trying to get all your information and you're wanting it condensed and it seems like it's condensed, but it's really not, because if you go to, you know, commercial development, the following neighborhood shall follow the design standard set by the neighborhood. And you've listed, you know, to say 12 different neighborhoods. There, how much uniformity between those neighborhood plans when it comes to design standards is there? Am I going to go to the Berkeley? You know, neighborhood and they're going to say, well, it needs to be eight foot city sidewalks, but BMC 13 says five foot is the standard, you know, so you're, you still have to navigate all these different neighborhoods. I mean, have you, as you look through these other neighborhoods where design standards, how consistent are the design standards for these little commercial uses in these neighborhood plans?
It's a mixed bag.
And I think, and I think that's just Phyllis's point is not saying, look, we're not going to answer all your questions in, you know, 15 pages. What we're saying is beware, go look.
Isn't that what this whole section does though? Like the whole point is to say, hey, there's all these other sections here, landscaping, parking, street improvements, you should go check those out. And it even says, but beware, these aren't the only sections to check out. So it's like a helpful guy. It's like, I feel like it's accomplishing what you guys are concerned about in a sense.
That's because you know the codes or they're.
Yeah, it's probably less intimidating for me. You're right, but you know, to, I guess there's a breakpoint where like you, you, if you cite too many things, it becomes useless. And if you don't give enough, it's, it's not enough. These would be hyperlink too, right?
Correct.
That's another nice thing. So like you're going to go, oh, parking, and you're going to be able to click on the, the link and it's going to pop you right to it.
I figured that these would be hyperlink. I was kind of hoping the city of Bellingham was that far with their computer web design. But are they to the point where if I had property in Berkeley and it's commercial and I wanted to develop something, I'd be able to click on a map that I'm in Berkeley and then click on the link for Berkeley and then maybe it brings up everything that pertains to Berkeley in all these other code areas? Is it linked that far yet? No.
No, that's a really cool idea.
That would be, that would probably be a lot of money and computer time, but that would be something to strive for.
We wouldn't be necessary then at that point, so.
Oh, no. Somebody's programming.
No, that's, that's, that would be a great way to get there eventually, for sure. And that's a great, it's a great idea.
I mean, when you're looking at commercial, a lot of these neighborhoods have commercial components to them, but they also have residential, you know, multifamily, a lot of different components to the neighborhood. As we, you know, I really am appreciative of this update and I think condensing it is good, getting rid of redundant language is good. As these neighborhood plans, you know, keep getting revised, I think it's just important to keep a format that you know, you can easily find commercial design standards in any of these neighborhoods versus residential design.
Correct. And, and the goal is for them to at least link to the appropriate section so that you're not just suddenly kicked to for the commercial design standards, for example, they're located in a number of different areas on the municipal code website. It would be great to get them. That's one of our goals is to update our web presence for for code publishing and to get everything organized so that the links go to the right place. And that the location is consistent and yeah, our web design is navigable.
Garrett, I think one thing that might be confusing about this is that we're talking about two different things when we talk about the design standards and the code requirements.
Yeah.
So like these, these code requirements that they're referencing are, are more universal. They're, you know, like the design standards don't talk about parking requirements and loading requirements and signs and fencing so much.
Or it's more, yeah.
Yeah.
Development regulations versus.
Yeah, whereas like the design, like if you were in Berkeley, for example, you would not, Berkeley's an urban village. So this, the commercial areas in Berkeley wouldn't even be subject to this code at all.
Right.
Right? There, that's.
Yeah, you have to go to the Berkeley urban village.
Yeah, so like if you were concerned about like getting confused by looking at the parking standards in here and then looking at the Berkeley ones, the ones in here, you wouldn't even be looking at this code. You'd just be looking at the Berkeley master plan or like the fountain master plan or whatever. I think that's what a little bit of the confusion here is, is that, that you're right, it's easy for me because I'm in it and my head's around it, but I, I think at the end of the day, I think at the end of the day, what they're trying to do is like, there will be a distinction between, there won't be as much confusion because these won't actually apply. These references won't actually apply in those urban villages, if that makes any, does that make any sense?
It seems like in a lot of ways that this is kind of like your, your basic surface level stuff.
Yeah.
These are your permitted uses. These are, I, you know, even setbacks starts to get a little ambiguous. But to Phyllis's point, just knowing that there's a lot of other places you gotta go. So maybe this does say that, you know.
Do you have something?
I was just curious in looking at the list of other code requirements, two through seven are all in chapter 20 and then the outliers, one, eight and nine are in totally different titles.
Right.
And I was wondering, they all also kind of seem like very critical and things that have to do more with safety and public health. If there was, I don't know, if there was a need for those to be pulled out differently since they're in such a different part of the municipal code versus ones that are all in the same chapter.
I always thought it would be helpful to have a list, these do apply, which are your general standards, parking, landscaping, et cetera. And then these might apply based on your project. Shorelines, critical areas, street improvements, what have you. So that might be.
That might be a better way to organize it.
Very good. I like that. You just don't know when the list is done if you're not.
I don't know how you do that, but that's.
Okay. And also, since we're experiencing some confusion here for a reorg, it might be helpful. This other code requirement section, which isn't design review, should that go just before the design review section? Have design review be your last thing?
Yeah.
That might help.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I went back and forth on it because when you're doing other code requirements, you're launching into other code sections. But you're also doing that with design review. So maybe it's.
You're, you're saying designer would be, be the last.
Exactly. Have that be the last thing.
Regulations first.
Yeah, keep those all in the same place.
You're going from concrete to then splitting off to.
Yeah.
I think that makes sense.
That's a good idea. Okay, do we want to talk about design review?
I do. So the design review process and standards were pulled from existing standards and processes because it is part of our work program to revise design review in general. So the idea with this code is get everything in the same place so that we know what's working and what's not, and we don't have to cross-reference and we can improve from there. So that's essentially what's going to happen with design review as well. And if commercial isn't in there, it's left out and then we're tacking it on later. And that, again, with cross-referencing and it gets confusing. So if we're trying to improve one section of code, we build it as it, as it is built currently, and then we can improve from there is the idea. So that was the sort of unifying theory that I went with. So you're going to see a lot of language that is already in 2025. It's just now being applied to commercial development. So in this section, we're dealing with, it can be summarized without all the torturous code language in the narrative memo. Just comes down to a couple of bullet points, really. Design review can be summarized as follows. This is on page four of your packets, if you want to follow along. All new commercial development will undergo design review. Projects within 50 feet of residential zones will be reviewed by a design review board if the director deems it necessary. And this would include that opportunity for public comment. Projects over 50 feet away from residential zones will be reviewed by staff in accordance with general commercial design standards or the commercial design standards for that applicable neighborhood. Projects that do not meet design standards and wish to seek a departure will be reviewed by the director. And projects that do not meet those design standards and don't qualify for a departure can be reviewed by the design review board. And that's regardless of your proximity to a use. So if you're saying, I want to try something new and innovative, but the design regulations as they are now, they won't let me and I don't qualify for a departure. Can't I just try it? And then that's something where, well, let's take it to the design review board. Let's have a public process. Let's talk about, is this a good idea? And that's, that's really what all of that jargon says or is supposed to say.
Well, I, I think design review is a good idea, you know. I think it helps ensure compatible development. And I just, from my perspective, I, I think it's important to look at, you know, development regulations and where there can be flexibility, write it into the code and, and get it picked up by design review because if you're going to go through that process anyway, that's now a requirement for all commercial development. It makes sense to make it as meaningful and purposeful as possible because you're really diving into the micro detail of that project. You know, what are the neighboring uses? What are the impacts? Sound, noise, traffic, everything? That's the right time to do it. So I'm not suggesting, you know, which development regulations to make optional or to have flexibility, but I'll just encourage you to look at that as you go through this and if there's opportunity for that. If it could be picked up in a design review, I think that's an appropriate time to do it.
Anybody?
So I had the big question for you is the 50 foot requirement for that design review board threshold. I picked that because it was two times the largest minimum yard requirement that we saw in auto that it said 25 if it's near a residential designation. And I figured if you're within double that, then you're going to need to go through some additional process to mitigate those kind of impacts that we were talking about with, could you reduce your yards? Yes or no? Well, if you can meet these performance criteria and mitigate your impacts, perhaps, assuming design, design review board approves it. So I just picked that number because it was double the minimum yard. And I'm wondering if that seems appropriate to have that sort of hard and fast rule or should should it be something different?
Well, if they had a larger lot, then you'd only be dealing with your immediate neighbor. I mean, if the lots were indeed bigger, 50, 50 feet would be if, if you had two small lots, then you'd be dealing with neighbors on the other side. But otherwise you'd just be dealing with the immediate neighbors. Is that, was that your intent?
Correct. I wanted to, I was avoiding that language of that it has to be abutting or touching in some way. Because if we do get a random leftover parcel and you can say, oh, I don't actually abut you because it's been subdivided strangely and there's this leftover parcel. Is that, is that really getting, and I don't know that that condition exists, but I didn't want that to be sort of a get out of design review free card.
With item two or bullet point number two, you said, did the project 50% of residential zones go to design review board? So you, so at that point, you're saying it's mandatory if you're within that 50 feet of a residential use to go to design review board. Because, because all uses are, all commercial uses are going to go through design review regardless.
Correct. So with the design review board specifically, that can be under, let's see.
But it skips right to the design review board?
It skips. It skips, um, this is where we get into the language, and this is, again, language that, um, exists presently, so I was trying to duplicate that, um, we're saying, um, so if we flipped to page, uh, 23 in your packets. Uh, section D, three, uh, line number seven, "Development within 50 feet of residential zones or development which does not qualify for a departure shall go to the design review board and follow the public process listed in subsection F2." And, uh, that language on page 24 says the design response, it talks about a design response meeting, um, and essentially that that's required if the director refers the project. So, it is, um, as we do our design review boards, we give our director some, uh, decision-making authority to say, you know, this really does need to go to design review because it is in such a sensitive area, or the way that they've designed it, they've really met all of our requirements, so, it's, although the language, although our language says, oh, you have to go to design review, we've built it in presently that says, but actually the director has the authority to say, no, you really need to go talk to them, or, or no, you really don't.
But you, but you're saying design review board, all projects go through design review?
Correct, and they go to the design review board should the director refer them.
Or they're within 50 feet of a residential zone, or the applicant wants to, doesn't feel like he got a desire, or they got a desirable review and want to go to the board.
Correct.
But, but, oh, everything goes through design review.
Everything goes through design review, administrative.
Right.
Design review, at the very least.
If I understand what you said correctly, on number three, I think I understand the other two, if you're in a commercial zone, you go through staff design review.
Right.
If you want a departure, you go through staff design review with the director's decision. Three, so this reads, "Development within 50 feet of residential zones shall go to the design review board," and, and, and follow the public process listed in subsection F2, but you're saying that that public process is, doesn't actually automatically send you to the design review board, it's the director's decision?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's.
I'm okay with that. I think that's misleading.
Yeah, I think so.
I, right.
And I think, I'm okay with the, I'm okay with the director making the decision for properties within 50 feet.
And just call that out.
But it seems mis, I think it would be misleading to, because it reads like you have to go, and unless you really dig in and read this other section.
And you say, oh, no, I don't.
And I think people would feel like, hey, wait, I thought they were supposed to go,
mm-hmm.
Default, does that make? You're there.
Correct.
So, it's.
I think so, and potentially in our other design review sections as well, if that's, if that is the language.
I'm okay with 50 feet, I don't know, I mean, double the.
And that, again, gets back to that minimum yard requirement that we weren't really sure how to right-size, that was.
I mean.
Could it be 40 feet if we just say it's 20, or?
I, I, I personally feel like, you know, commercial properties that are adjacent to residential use should, should go through design review, so, 50 feet, 20 feet, adjacent to.
To the board, they should have that op, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's just how I feel, if it's, you know, you put, you take a, a parcel, I mean, I just take adjacent uses, but I'm, I'm fine with 50 feet, too, it seems like that would encompass.
It automatically picks up everyone adjacent.
Right.
If it's 50, but it could also pick up someone who's not adjacent, if you built, like, a 30, if you had a 30-foot wide lot, and someone built the building on that, and you were on the other side of it, you'd still be stuck, potentially going to the design review board, even though you really had no relationship to the.
If the 50 feet, if it was 50 feet, and not adjacent, yeah.
Yeah.
To me, adj, uh, the intent, like, adjacent is where I think you should be looking at impacts, because you got two different uses.
So, how would that affect if, um, a road divided the, you know, the single-family neighborhood and the commercial property? Um, because I could see adjacent being, well, it's across, so there's nothing in between us, you know, city right-of-way, does that count versus the distance aspect?
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm thinking of, like, you know, going down James Street, you know, that's bigger than 50 feet, so, something on one side having the development versus the other side, which is homes, won't be impacted as much, and perhaps shouldn't be triggered. So, adjacent in that situation, someone could say, you know, city right-of-way, if it didn't count as being, you know, considered, you know.
Right.
Something, so, the 50 feet could, I would assume, bypass the situation using James Street as an example, where you have homes on one side and perhaps commercial on the other, and it's bigger than 50 feet, but I think that arterial creates enough of a buffer that you wouldn't necessarily have to go through that whole design review, so to me, the, the, a distance would, in a way, provide a little bit more flexibility when you're dealing with roadways, does that make sense?
Is that how you guys interpret adjacent?
I'm not sure how roads impact those kind of decisions.
I'm sorry, we have it all over the board, where sometimes we say, abutting within 100 feet, uh, across, and, across a right-of-way from, and then we have, and it's all different depending on which zones are which, and where they're, where, and what the yards are, and what goes in the yards, and what can't go in the yards, you know, it's literally all over the board, so, that's something that we could probably, you know, discuss that length, that's probably something we could revisit. I, I like what you say about roads, there is, especially like arterials like James, you know, Main Thoroughfare, well, do we really need to be going?
Alabama.
To the design review board, even if the street's even only 50 feet wide for those kinds of things, that's a question. Maybe, maybe, um, maybe a, a matrix of some kind, you know, helps us identify the, the steps that Elise has laid out, and then the different, maybe the different situations that might help us sort of streamline it, and answer some of those questions about, how is 50 feet applied?
I'm thinking of Ella Street, because you have the hospital on one side that maybe eventually will be developed, on the other side you have housing, and it is a very wide road, so, something, you know, is defining, is adjacent meaning, or, abutting to me is property line to property line, adjacent could mean you're across the street, there's nothing developed between us other than city rightaways, so therefore it would be triggered, but it would be nice to be able to define in that situation what would really adjacent mean, because then I would go with distance.
And a lot of our notices and pro, a lot of our projects that we notice, we get far more public comment on things that are abutting and different than across a right-of-way. Once it's across a right-of-way, it, you know, pretty much goes down to almost nothing a lot of times.
Yeah.
Depending, yeah.
One way to deal with your concern, which is a good one, is, um, just keeping in mind that it's written pretty loosely, I mean, if you used adjacent, just to take that idea out, it's still the director's call, right? So, the directors say, hey, this is adjacent, but it's across a 60-foot right-of-way, I don't think it needs to go, I mean, i- it would be a different way of doing it, it's giving, like, basically giving staff more discretion versus protecting that risk explicitly with a dimensional standard.
I'm just thinking of, um, public perception, you know, we want to make sure that the director, um, is not put into a situation where they're doing an interpretation, and the public has a different interpretation of what adjacent means, because then it creates the bad will, that, you know, there's some, you know, not following good process, um, and that's what we're trying to avoid with a good plan, so, I, if anything, define what it means, so that the public reading it, when there's a large development happening, they're not feeling that, uh, due process wasn't happening.
Right.
Good point. Phyllis?
I have a question, um, is there anything in the code that if a development or, uh, construction project goes in and it creates runoff, um, I mean, we have a lot of hills and so on here, and that, that could transfer to the adjacent property and further on down the line, um, I don't know if that's applicable here, but is, does that come up in design review, practical matters like, uh, water runoff?
Our stormwater code deals with that, um, we do have new, uh, LID language that we're now meant to apply, uh, but it's not really design-related unless it blends or is the, takes the same location on a property as landscaping, those kinds of things, but runoff specifically is stormwater, 1542.
One, I would say that section E, departures, that's great in general.
Okay.
Allowing, allowing the director, allowing administrative departures from design review is a really good thing, and it's even better when you quantify it with criteria, because, like Lisa just said, there's predictability for the public, there's, it's both, you get your flexibility at an administrative level, but you get predictability.
Right.
And so, I'm pleased to see the way that was added, um, and I think it's, it's a good capture of, like, both sides of the issue. Does anybody else have comments on, like, the, I guess, the first couple of sections?
Can I make a request? On, um, E2D, where it specifies enhance or protects a character of neighborhood or vicinity by protecting natural features, historic sites, open space, and other resources? I think of historic sites that, uh, I believe City Council about five years ago, six years ago, when they were looking at the, the, um, reduced tax for development, that if someone demolished a potentially contributing historic, um, piece of property, they didn't get that, that tax benefit, and I'm thinking that Bellingham has some historic sites, but they have a lot more potentially contributing, so I'm thinking of our historic neighborhoods where one section may have been designated, another has not, um, just because it's a huge process to go through. So, I know it's getting a little bit into the weeds, but I think we have a lot of places that maybe in the next 15, 15 years can be designated as historic, it's just the process hasn't gone through, so it'd be nice to see potential, some crafting of that, whether you go back to, I think it was, uh, Councilman Liliquist who had framed the verbiage for that, but it'd be nice to be able to mirror that, so that the potentially contributing would also be recognized in this, if there's support for that.
Basically, saying historic sites or potentially contributing historic sites? Yeah, it seems.
The hope is we don't come back and have to, you know, it's trying to look at something that could be sitting here for 20, 25 years.
Right.
Since the last time this was done, and it was the 60s.
At least, the procedural stuff in F and, in F is really just verbatim from the other code, right?
Yep. That is, that is our process, and we're talking about revising that for, um, not just commercial properties, but for all, um, all types of projects that go through design review under chapter 2025, doing a, a refining of that process, so, uh, this comes in line with what we have presently, and as we move forward and try to change that, um, this puts us in a good position for commercial properties to be part of that conversation.
Is there anything in design review procedure, board procedure, that you think might be modified and might suit commercial development better than what, what's existing? Just things that have come up in design review process, or you guys have said, hey, this, this could be better, maybe relating to commercials, since that's what we're talking about?
Not specifically in my experience.
I don't, I don't have much experience with that either, I'm not a design review expert at all.
Because we just copied and pasted here, that's what we did.
But, but you're going through this design review process update, is what you're saying?
Correct.
So, if you found, ostensibly, if you found things that needed to change, they would track, this would then track with it?
Correct.
Yeah, like, if we adopted this first, and then you updated the design review code, and that, we'd do an amendment to this at the same time, to match, okay?
Awesome.
Okay?
Right, this essentially just gets it in place, the, so that we can say, you know, commercial, too, we're, we're also part of this.
Gotcha. So, how about the standards?
Yeah, so, the very last section, they're kind of, uh, some dummy standards that I put in, um, I pulled them from waterfront and Barclay based on, um, uh, focus group feedback, where people seemed generally positive about those areas, um, and then there was an additional section, uh, the public amenity section, that came about from the community focus groups, uh, which seemed pretty interesting, that's on page 25, uh, section, uh, four, um, and there was a lot of discussion about, we want more neighborhood commercial, but we're concerned that, you know, it's gonna be, that it be desirable neighborhood commercial, and that it be integrated, um, with the existing neighborhood in a way that's really compatible and harmonious, um, so, uh, they were spitballing ideas that, um, you, you talk about through a public process, getting some sort of amenity in place that says, you know, I want to bring a commercial use to your neighborhood, um, but I want it to be good for the neighborhood, too, so something like providing a community meeting space, and so, being able to be a little more flexible with, oh, your use wants to come in, and we might, in the neighborhood, be okay with that, if you're willing to show that you're going to be, um, really part of the neighborhood, and you're not just trying to jam in a, whatever, strip mall commercial, which is not what we need in our neighborhood commercial areas, that's not what we're going for. So, that was one of their ideas, and I wanted to put that in there, uh, because it seemed interesting, um, but the other topics for site design, orientation to the street, screening, crime prevention, these are all just the topics that are, it currently exist, and when we move forward into getting specific design standards, which will obviously have to be a part of the design review process, we can't just have a process without standards, um, to, to visit these specific sections of code, where we've heard positive feedback that things like that connectivity, be it pedestrian and vehicular, and connectivity to open spaces, and we want to see that in our design review process, that's what these are.
Is the intent that you would provide those as a part of this ordinance, or as a part of the design review update that you guys are doing?
Um, this would be part of this ordinance.
So, when this comes back, they'll actually be, like, the, the specifics on these.
Right, so, that first step is, do we want design review, yes or no? And then, from there, we can, you know, actually write the standards, so we're saying that potentially, yes, we do want it, and the process that we have now, you know, with its ups and downs, will, we would adopt that, and then, these are the standards that we want to go along with it, but it's just that order of operations of, first, I wanted to see, do we actually want to do this?
With design standards, you know, we've had some, now a pretty good history with design standards and different, standards in different neighborhoods, Fairhaven has different standards in downtown, and I'm just, uh, some of the things that I, that I see is prescriptive designs, that you can see that people are just striving to do something that they know will work, and that, that, and we've talked about this before, you know, where's the creativity in building, and, because it becomes too prescriptive, so I'm just, uh, wondering if we can spend some time, when we're developing these standards, to just meet, let the intent be known, you know, when you're talking about, you know, orientation to the street, you know, I think that, you know, but again, you know, depends on parking, you know, and where, you know, with commercial, there's a lot that goes into, I just, I'm not writing these standards, but I'm encouraging flexibility, openness for creativity, but still maintaining intent, and, and to look at what's worked in other places and what hasn't worked, you know, because what, what ends up happening, you just, you see buildings that are very homogenous and just similar in design, because people just want to know, well, I need 13 windows on this street, so I'll add my 13 windows. Crime prevention says I should have a door here, so I'll put a door here, and they start to look the same, so.
I read the comments that were provided in the, um, you provided in this, the comments from people.
Right, right, right.
And it was interesting, because basically what Garrett said is what everybody said, I felt like every design comment from the focus group was like, the big picture is great, don't get in the weeds.
Mm-hmm.
You know, like, yeah, like, orientation to the street's okay, having a, uh, mass and articulation components, or ensuring pedestrian, like, looking at all these things, you, you pretty much hit all the things that people seem interested in, but underlying all that, I just got the vibe, underlying all those comments was exactly kind of what Garrett said, is, don't get too specific, make sure you capture the big issues. the big issues, you know, without restricting the creativity of design too much, and I think we can do that, because it's about protecting, like, residential neighbors, or, you know, ensuring a good view corridor down the street, and, and making sure parking's not, for me, like a, like a no-brainer, like, don't let parking be up on the street, force the parking to the side of the rear, like, things we can all agree on that are good, and then let people work within that box, so I, I second that, I, I think design review is really important to protect the public, but if too restrictive, if too specific, it can really result in boring, boring buildings. That's my thought.
I do agree, um, I do like the, um, connectivity aspect, because I think there was a perfect example in that focus group off of Kellogg going into the Cordada area, I work over in that area, and I don't walk over to those restaurants, because there is no sidewalk accessing those buildings, and a few times that I have, cars exiting down that small little ramp, you don't have much of a choice of where you're going to put yourself to not be hit, and so-
Are you talking about Blossom Commons across the street?
Uh, if you head up towards Best Buy, um-
Yeah.
-off of Kellogg, when you go up either one of those, there's not a sidewalk access going into that parking area-
Yeah.
-so you're walking on a slope of grass or in this, in the road, and people coming down, it's a slight little incline to come to the stop, and so I just don't go, because I could walk there for lunch, I don't, and I don't want to drive, so, I mean, it's, you know, design-wise, you know, whoever put that in there was not really thinking that Cordada, there was going to be a mass residential development, and how many community college students there are, so, I mean, I, I, we need the big picture, so we don't have something like that, I certainly hope if someone's listening or pass the information on, they cut out some of the landscaping and put a sidewalk in there, they might increase some of their business traffic from the residential area, but, um, I, I do agree, though, I mean, we just, we don't want the unintended consequences, like parking right in the front off the street or something, but, um, you know, we don't want to limit, you know, some really good innovative designs that help Spillingham grow and maintain being an interesting place to live, so I think broad strokes would be very appropriate, but you probably won't get that comment from me too often.
Well, particularly because these aren't like Fairhaven or downtown, where we have like, character-defining-
Right.
-designs, we're talking about areas that are, like Baker View, like, why not provide the opportunity for creativity along Baker View, we're not preserving historic Baker View character, so, you know, I don't know, particularly in these instances, I think it's appropriate. Anybody else?
Yeah, that's our last section, so, anything?
So, yeah, thank you very much, that was really, really, um, well put together, and generated more discussion than I thought, which is cool, you know, there's actually a lot in there to talk about, um, so, next steps?
Right, as incorporating this feedback, I'll be providing you with the, the maps that you requested to really talk about, the areas that we're, we're interested in, um, working with staff to get, to get that kind of, uh, design standard language, that sweet spot, where we encourage creativity, um, and, and keep, uh, keep our commercial uses accountable to their neighbors, um, and it will be incorporating all this mess of, uh, notes that I've taken over my packet, um, and when that next meeting is, I'll need to double-check with staff, because I know there's a lot in front of you right now, and I want to make sure it's a coordinated effort.
That's great, well, thank you again.
Yeah, one of the biggest problems I have with going through all these workshops, six, seven weeks, you come back to us, and most of these comments are forgotten until we see the work project, and then we don't always are able to pick out what was said tonight, and the changes incorporated, I wonder if you could highlight blue line or whatever, the changes that were specifically made or, uh, suggested, either not adopted or adopted, to give the people that said something credit, so they can see where it went.
It's a great suggestion.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, well, I think with that, we'll close the work session, thanks again, and, um, we should be able to wrap up pretty quick, because there's not much else, uh, Greg, do you have any comments, general comments or anything?
Not, uh, not really, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things coming up, uh, on your, uh, meeting agenda, it looks like you're going to get the month of June off, um, we don't have anything currently scheduled, we couldn't do anything on June 1st, because we couldn't meet notice requirements, it's possible, we still might need a meeting on June 15th, um, but, nothing currently scheduled, we've got a text amendment coming to you on July 6th, this is one that is interesting, because we have several areas of the city where we allow a mix of residential uses, and we put in the code that in certain circumstances, the single-family had to be built first, and that's turned out to be not a good thing, so we're going to, um, bring a code change to you that would allow more flexibility for a large property, wants to build some multifamily, and wants to do it right away, which we would certainly encourage, and then we, and on July 20th, we've got the Community Colleges Institutional Master Plan coming to the group, and that'll be, that'll be kind of a big deal.
Does that have an update for them, like a, like a-
No, it's a, it's, it's the initial adoption of their institutional plan.
Wow, okay, and our next meeting is May 18th, which is-
Oh, yes, you're right, I'm sorry.
A reason, right?
May 18th, you've got the, uh, uh, comp plan amendment that was added by council for the property in the Cordada neighborhood that's going to become the Cordada Neighborhood Park.
Garrett?
Yeah, I did, Phyllis and I went to a workshop last weekend, on Saturday, and, uh, we were talking with, the, the planning director was there, and one of the things that we just came up with discussion was the planning department's work program, when you guys adopt that, you know, at whatever time in your year you adopt that, uh, we thought it'd be really helpful if the planning commission could see what the work program was for the planning staff, not to have any direction or say on it, but just to kind of know what you guys are working on, so we get a feel for kind of what's in the pipeline?
Sure.
And what, what months do you guys adopt that, is that like a beginning of the year thing, or?
Well, we try and plan out two years in advance, um, and we typically do it at the, towards the end of a year, so in December, when it's kind of quiet, um, and I think, did we already send that out to the group? Okay, so we have emailed you our work program.
That was today, right? You probably just haven't seen it yet.
Yeah.
I think, I think they listened to you-
Oh, yeah.
-and got it out today.
I didn't, I didn't see it, so, cool.
No, check your email.
All right.
You'll be, uh-
I didn't look at it, but I just saw that something came through, do you, did anybody look at it? Not yet, yeah.
Well, there was even some discussion about informal-
It's a two-year work, work program with about five years' worth of work on it.
But, but in the mayor's boardroom, informal meetings with us, it'd be a public meeting, but not videotaped, but audiotaped, that we could just do some brainstorming, because sometimes, we, we, I feel like we're doing things in isolation, and it's nice to have the bigger, broader picture which you guys have.
We could do that, but, yeah, I appreciate, uh, hopefully I'm not the only one interested in that, I'd- Yeah, take a look, get the work program, and if you have any questions about it, uh, let us know.
I think it helps, because we actually get questions as planning commissioners, um, from people in the public, like, once, I heard this was coming up, or, you know, when are you guys tackling this issue? I'm sure everybody, yeah, and so it's good to, you're right, it's good to be like in the mix a little and know what's up.
I had a quick question, on, I believe it's, uh, Wednesday, the 31st this month, there's a, um, planning course that's in Burlington, which I signed up for, um, and I know a couple other commissioners have previously attended and said that they, um, were not going to, am I, do you know if I'm the only one going, or if there are other members that we can look towards carpooling? Because I didn't see who else was going.
Mike, signed up as well.
Okay, then I'll have a conversation with him to see if he wants to carpool.
You'll have a carpool, buddy.
Keith?
I wanted to see if anyone was going to- And on, um, low-income housing, and now I'm losing one, it is, um, but I knew that I, I know that I'm not able to go, and I was interested in if, um, folks went, if someone could do a report out, or even an email out of, um, from it, I'll watch it, but, just looking for it, I think I might have taken it off my calendar, because I knew that I couldn't attend.
It's, it, it's on Monday, May 15th-
That's right.
At 7:00 to 8:30 at the Mount Baker Theater, it's a town hall meeting, and the subject is-
Will it be recorded?
I'm sorry?
I imagine it'll be recorded?
Yes.
Okay.
And the subject is housing, housing affordability, housing issues.
Will it be aired live, like, the meetings are just recorded?
That I don't know.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, quick complaint, uh, with the last three, excuse my bad, the last three sessions we've had, the door's been locked downstairs, and we sit there banging on the door till 6:20 or so to get in, it's my understanding that at 6:30, it's supposed to be open, so we can get in, it hasn't been, and I don't, I don't know why or where the ball has been dropped, but it certainly would be nice, if you come early, we could get in and get settled, and-
Okay.
Is there a back door that's open that we can sneak through?
No.
Well, I just thought I'd ask.
All right, well, thanks, everybody, and, uh, with that, I think we'll adjourn and we'll reconvene in two weeks, thank you.